Good evening. I'm going to call the meeting to order. We have a roll call, please, Beth.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Vice Mayor Magazine.
Yep.
Councilmember DePorter.
Here.
Councilmember Yates.
President.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Tolles.
Here.
Councilmember LaGee.
Here.
All right, thank you. Discussion with possible direction to staff regarding the 10-year budget overview, including revenue options. Grady?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, and for the public here tonight. I just want to provide a little bit of background why we are here tonight. You will recall that at the council retreat that we looked at projected revenues and expenditures for the next five years. And we, while things looked like they had improved a little bit in terms of the revenue shortfall, coming down from a $6 million last year to about three and a half, 3.7 million in five years, nevertheless, we still have a revenue shortfall that we have projected. And during that session that we had with the council at the retreat, the council directed staff to come back and look at all the different items that we may have deferred over the years, such as maintenance and pavement management and the capital replacement fund and staffing, where we've cut back on staffing. And so, that's what we've done. And I believe, after I've looked at what our staff has done, they've done a really good job. The department heads work very closely with their staff in identifying those areas where we have either deferred maintenance or have not adequately, you know, planned for the future because the resources that we had just would not be able to afford to pay for these things. So, before each tonight, Craig and I will be tag teaming, but Craig's going to go through a presentation that will include the 10-year projection. That includes both the, on the expenditure side, a number of items, and then what those drivers are going to be over the next 10 years, and also the revenues. And then, of course, that will show an even wider gap than what you saw back in February when you were looking at the five-year projection. So, with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Rudolphy, our finance director, who's going to go over this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Mike?
You asked us to prepare a 10-year projection. It was not an easy challenge. We have difficulty looking into our crystal ball for the next year, let alone five years and now 10 years. But with the assistance of staff, we put our heads together, tried to come up with all the revenue options that we could think of, as well as identify all of the deferred items that we have set aside in order to keep the town functioning. So hopefully, this presentation will be informative and enlightening. Feel free to interrupt me for questions. So, first, I'd like to start with kind of a recap of what our challenges are, just to refresh everybody's memory and to set the stage for what's to come. So as we all know, it has been presented before, our general fund revenues are not keeping up with our operating costs. As the town manager pointed out, our anticipated cumulative shortfall in the next five years is 3.7 million. That is down from the five and a half or so that we had projected last year. Also pointed out that state shared revenue is roughly the same as it was in fiscal year five and six, which was 5.3 million. As we know, other cities can grow in population, but as they do, the Fountain Hills portion of the state shared revenues will continue to decline since it's based on population. HIRF has been declining for a variety of reasons: lower gas tax revenues, legislature using the HIRF monies to fund Department of Public Safety and more efficient vehicles. And as you all know, our sales tax can go up or down based on the economy, and that has happened in the not distant future, in the not recent past. So we're trying to, in the past, address with our residents both sales tax and primary property taxes. As we know, the primary tax possibilities have been defeated in the past. As a result, staff made significant cuts in staffing and has contracted out multitude of services for right-of-way maintenance and other things. We've done about as much as we can, and any future cuts are going to have a definite negative impact on our residents. The savings that was reaped from the contracting out of services has pretty much been eaten up by the increase in prices. We have, in my opinion, we have a structural issue that needs to be faced, and also, in my opinion, it's a more of a revenue problem than it is an expenditure problem. So to kind of set the stage, two years ago, our then-current town manager brought up the issue of the expenditure limitation. This is a slide that we used two years ago. Expenditure limitation has been in effect since 1980. Didn't affect us because we weren't around back in 1980, but it did starting in 1989. Annually, the Economic Estimates Commission gives us a state-imposed expenditure limitation in February. Calculations are based on the GDP implicit price deflator adjusting for inflation and population changes. And so if someone asked me to calculate what the expenditure limitation is for next year, I will be unable to do that because I cannot do it based on GDP implicit price deflator adjusting for inflation and population. There are a multitude of exceptions or exemptions that can be applied in calculating the expenditure limitation. Any city or town can do one of two things. They can have a permanent adjustment, or they can have a opt-to-have-home rule. Either one requires a vote of the citizens. If we choose to go the permanent adjustment to the base, then it can only be held per statute on the next general council election, which will not be until August of 2018. Just for some background, year ended June 30th of '16, we were under the limit by $11.5 million. Our estimate for the current fiscal year '16-'17, we're only going to be under $100,000. And then for the next year upcoming budget, '17-'18, we are estimating we're going to be $1.8 million under the budget, under the limit. And I'll explain that a little bit further as to why we seem to be so close this year.
And Craig, if I could just kind of jump in and explain. So when we were looking at the different revenue options, we were wanting to just be aware of the expenditure limitation that's imposed by the state because we wanted to make sure any of these options that were generating more revenue, that we were going to be able to stay within the cap that's imposed by the state. And Craig's going to go ahead and talk a little bit more about some of the exceptions to that. And, but as we're looking at these different options, we were looking at this, but as it turns out, this is probably going to be more or less a non-issue for us, and we'll go into that in a little bit.
Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Craig, doesn't the draft budget of '17-'18 indicate $450,000?
It does. As a result of that number and then some questions from the town manager, we contacted our outside auditors, Heinfelden and Meach, and had them come out Monday morning and sit with myself and our accountant. And we reworked the expenditure calculation so that we would better understand the calculation and be able to move, provide a better number. So because of that recalculation, our numbers changed.
Could you just repeat what the number is?
$1.8 million for fiscal '17-'18. As I mentioned, there were several exemptions, exclusions, reductions in the calculation. The big one is that any ido, any monies received that are not town-generated funds, such as bond proceeds, such as grant recipient monies, such as donations or sponsorships, those are not considered in the expenditure limitation. So when we get that money and then we spend it, that expenditure does not have to be counted toward the limit. The big influence is large CIP projects. As you all know, for the last several years, in our proposed CIP plan, we have included Adaro Canyon and the fire station number two relocation. That's been in the budget for at least three years now and has been budgeted between $5 and $6 million a year. If those monies are not spent, then they don't count toward the expenditure limitation. For example, our next year's budget, our current year's budget, is estimated at $34 million. Included in that $34 million is $5 to $6 million for Adaro Canyon and the fire station. Using the $34 million as a starting point is where we come down to the $100,000 under the limit for fiscal '16-'17. But we are not going to expend $5 to $6 million for Adaro Canyon or the fire station in fiscal '16-'17. So that immediately reduces the amount of our budgeted expenditures and therefore correspondently increases by a like amount, the amount under the budget, under the limit. So while I said we're, for '16-'17, $100,000 under the limit, add $5 million to that. So we're $5,100,000 under the limit for '16-'17, our current year.
Vice Mayor?
Craig, does that positively affect the numbers on the shortfall? If we're not spending that money?
The shortfall is projected starting in '17-'18. Well, '17-'18 is balanced and then going forward. So in '17-'18, we did budget to spend those monies, and I expect that we will spend the majority of those monies in '17-'18. So they've already been accounted for in the five-year projection.
But the expenditure limitation's a different animal altogether from the shortfall issue?
So my last bullet is repeating, if the actual expenditures are less than budgeted expenditures, then the estimated, in our case, under limit is increased dollar for dollar for that amount. On the next slide, if you can see it, but it's also in your handout. You can look at the column, the first column after fiscal year, budgeted expenditures. That is the amount that council has approved as the budget. The actual expenditures is what we've actually submitted, or that's what we've actually spent. So in fiscal 11-12, we budgeted $38 million. We only spent $16 million. In 12-13, we budgeted $31 million, only spent $17 million. Once again, the direct result of having some fairly significant capital improvement plan projects that were not undertaken. So if you look at '15-'16, which was last year, we budgeted 36, we spent, actually spent 27, but using our exclusions, as I mentioned before, what numbers are used for the calculation towards the expenditure limitation was only $15 million. That's the column labeled adjusted expenditures. The next column is the Economic Estimates Commission estimate, and so for last year, we were $11.5 million under. And you can see for those years previously, it's been in the $10 million range under budget. '16-'17, we've budgeted $34 million, but as I said, we're not going to spend the majority of the money for Adaro Canyon or the fire station. So our actual expenditures are going to be at least $6 million less, and therefore, we'll take our exclusions and exemptions to get down to our adjusted expenditure number, which I'm confident is going to be well under the 27 million, which is our expenditure limit. Next year, we've also budgeted $34 million. We will be spending the Adaro Canyon and Fire Station Two. The expenditure limit went up a little bit, but with our exclusions and exemptions, I believe we're going to be $1.8 million under the limit. That's my best guess to date. Ask me tomorrow, I may have another best guess.
But historically, we haven't had two general fund-type projects of that magnitude in expense. And so historically, like when we did Suaro, the Suaro, that was a huge one, and that was, what, $8 million?
Seven, seven to eight million.
Seven, eight million, and that was bond. So bonded indebtedness is excluded. So, and so are like when we do projects like on Shea, we receive funding from MAG or through the state for, you know, those improvements. So that doesn't count. So the good news here, we were wanting to do this analysis as part of the revenue options that we're going to present to you tonight because we wanted to make sure that we weren't going to get in a situation where with the state-imposed limitation, that, you know, we can collect the money, but under the state, you know, limitation on expenditures, that we weren't going to be able to spend it. We're pretty confident that there's not going to be an issue, but at some point in the foreseeable future, I would say that we probably need to go to voters at some point and do, you know, one of the two options to address this. But I think we're fine in the near-term and midterm future, so we don't have to really worry about this, I think, for maybe six to eight years out. So, but we wanted this analysis here because we wanted to see the impact once we, you know, if the council were to make some decisions on revenue options.
Before I go to the next slide, I just want to recall and remind council that in their packet materials for this presentation was an Excel file, large format Excel file with many lines that represented all of the anticipated increases in both revenues and expenditures. Unfortunately, the revenue list was a lot shorter than the expenditure list. And so our starting point for that was our, the basis was the five-year presentation that we made earlier and that we're using that results in a cumulative shortfall over that five-year period of 3.7 billion. I then took that same projection and carried it out five more years, and that was our starting point for both revenues and expenditures. So the next slide talks about what our major drivers are. Of that long, five-page list of revenues and expenditures, three pages, three-plus pages was expenditures, and of those expenditures, these are the big items. The pavement management program. We're saying we need $2 million a year for pavement maintenance. We need $2 million a year for pavement replacement. And then we wanted to increase our pavement maintenance, so we added another $2 million. Public safety. We know that that, those...
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, quick question. Under the limitation, maintenance, I understand, would count?
Yes.
Would pavement replacement, that's, isn't that a capital project?
If it is funded with debt, it would not count. If it is paid out of current revenues, it would count.
I thought cap... Okay.
It's semantics. We could call it capital, but if it's not bond-funded, it's part of the calculation for the expenditure limit.
Right. Suaro's a good example. The other thing too, Craig, is the HIRF money is, is not exempt because that's part of state shared revenue, right?
There is an exemption for some of the HIRF expenditures. That is the toughest part of the calculation, and I don't feel comfortable trying to explain it without a lot of paper.
Sure.
Public safety, we have, I budgeted at a 3% increase. And MCSO, even though we, for fiscal '17-'18, received a 2.6% reduction in fees, I still anticipate because of the lawsuits and the settlements for public employee personnel safety retirement, that I put in a 10% increase per year. Capital reserve study was presented to council earlier, and it is recommending $960,000 annually for building up that fund to cover any of our anticipated replacement items. One of those replacement items is the lake liner. We have our Shea, we have our street widening projects, both on Shea Boulevard and Fountain Hills Boulevard. Those are one-time costs, and they will probably be wrapped into a bond package. So those costs would be or could be excluded. You'll see that quite prominently on the next slide. Parks, we are anticipating another community park and another neighborhood park, and those are the costs associated with that. And then we also have a new fire station number three that's currently being, development fees are currently being collected for that. The fees that we're collecting are not adequate to pay for the cost of construction of that station, but in addition to that, we then need to staff it and operate it. And so those are the costs that we anticipate needing for operating that station number three.
Just a quick question about the MCSO contract. You put in 10%, but it was a 2.6% reduction, but you left the...
The $3,715 reflects a 2.6 reduction. And then using that as a starting point, I went up 10% starting next fiscal year.
Next fiscal...
18-19.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Graphically, here's where we look. The yellow line is not our revenues. The lower line is our revenues. The big spike is due to those two widening projects, Shea and Fountain Hills Boulevard. So if we were to bond for those, then that spike would probably level itself out, but it would still continue on that trend upward. This is typically the same graph as I just showed you. The green is our revenue, the green is our operating expenditures, which is using the five-year projection resulting in $3.7 million and extrapolating that out to 10 years. The red is the revenues, adding in the projected future revenues. And then the blue incorporates all of the deferred items or wish list items that, I won't say wish list, the deferred items that we feel are necessary to... I don't know if I have a good adjective for what we would like. We feel the blue items would be necessary to continue to maintain the town in the manner that we have.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Tolles?
Thank you. Lot of information and a lot of guesses to...
Absolutely.
...that, okay? The two largest expenses that we have with Rural Metro and our Public County Sheriff's Office, if you were to scale those back and you were to bring those to a 2% to 3% increase, what would, what would our graphs look like?
The green line would be lower. Historically, we've had a contract with Rural Metro that has called for a 3%. MCSO, if anybody would like to give me a better number, I'm more than happy to try it.
Craig, can you go back two slides? And I think, I think there might be maybe a misunderstanding. So that column that says 10-year cost, that's the 10-year cost. That's not the incremental increase...
No, it's not.
...due to these drivers. So like, to your point, Councilmember Tolles, when you look at the MCSO and it says 53 million, that's 53 million based on the 3.7 million with the multipliers over the 10 years. So that's not, so that column there, when you're looking at all those items that are itemized, that's not taking into consideration the incremental increase over the 10 years. So does that make more sense to you? Dennis?
No, I was following pretty well.
Okay, well, it's saying basically that you take, we'll take the pavement maintenance, for instance, $2 million a year, and then you times that by 10 and you get to 20 million, okay? But that's the actual cost. It's not the continued increase over time. So that's, so that's what's happening is that right column is showing the actual cost plus increases.
Of 10% year after year.
For MCSO, exactly.
Which is affecting the long-term projections...
Right.
...of our shortfalls.
Exactly.
Yeah, so if, so if we were to look at what just happened, we had a 2.6% decrease in our Maricopa County Sheriff's Office budget. So if we were to look at a 2% to 3% annually, when we're dealing with the number-one expense of our community and we're projecting a 10% every year, year over year, that's substantial.
And Councilmember, to your point, that is substantial, and what we believe, and we were just really dumbfounded for next fiscal year, that they did not have a significant increase, and a lot of it had to do with, they didn't have the numbers in yet from the public safety retirement system, and that is really what's driving our cost. We pay a reimbursement basis, basically, actual cost of service contract, and we pay a pro-rata share of their unfunded liability for the public safety retirement. And so we believe 10% is probably right in the neighborhood based on what we're hearing. So that's just going to be probably around for the foreseeable future. They just didn't have that, the numbers run yet in time for this upcoming fiscal year. They admitted to us that they thought, you know, that the number should have been bigger, but they didn't want to guesstimate at that. They want to have an actual number. So, so that's, we did our best based on the assumptions that we had at the time that this analysis was, was produced.
Okay, so just getting back to what Councilman Tolles said, if this 10% does turn into just 3%, how does that affect the overall projection?
It would have a significant impact. I have not computed that. Wouldn't take long to do. I'm not prepared to do it while I stand here.
Right, that's understandable.
But as an example, it would be like, you know, instead of $371,000, it would be about $120,000 or so, $125,000. So you see what that's like over the next two, 10 years. It'd be sort of, 3.7 million, it would be roughly 1.2 or 1.3 million. Does that make sense?
Do you know the answer?
No, I'm sorry. No, I don't.
I'm looking for the answer.
It'd be about a third.
1.1 versus, versus 3.7.
Right, it'd be a third of that.
Isn't the... Mayor, if I may. For example, MCSO, the annual contract is 3 million, right?
3.7.
3,715. So if you add three, and that's without, is that, that's without the increase. That's what we're paying currently.
Yeah, 3,777 is what we will pay for '17-'18.
So if you add 3% to that, 4%, 10%, that number's just only going to increase.
Correct.
Okay. So the $53 million is based on 10 times 3.7 increased by 10%?
Correct. Annually, yes.
Okay, very good.
So the regular, the 10-year cost with no increase is 37 million. So the difference between 37 and 53 is, I can do the math, 16. So, and that represents 10%. So if we take a third of that 16, it'd be 5 million, so the 53 would really be like 42.
Be $1.6 million a year difference. Over 10 years, which is $16 million.
Yes. But it wouldn't happen over 10 years. I mean, it wouldn't be 1.6 annually. It'd be an increasing amount.
Vice Mayor?
I would certainly hope that it's not 10%, but my understanding, and correct me on this, Grady, but as I understand it, the legislature changed the formula in 2011, and the court said that all of that money that was not, that was basically not put in the fund, 2011 to present day, has to be made up and...
Refunded as well.
Refunded. And going forward, it has to remain the same. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so...
So that voter ballot item that was approved, I think, a year ago or so, it's, it's not going to have quite the positive impact as we were hoping it would have, where basically they were going to re-ambortize the whole unfunded liability for all the agencies. It's going to be wiped out, and then we're going to have to be making up money.
So we're talking about a lot of money that has to be made up.
Right.
And if it doesn't come from the cities and towns, I wonder where it's going to come from. from.
Mayor, if I may, I had a question on...
Sure.
Thank you. Craig, could you go back to the slot, the graph? Well, either one would work. Well, actually, go, yeah, that one there.
The other one.
The one before, prior, prior. So when I, when I look at what our projected expenditures are annually and our projected revenues, I average about, I mean, next year it's 4 million, prior, the shortfall, we'll call it shortfall. It goes 4 million, 5 million, 6 million, 7 million, 9 million, 16 million, 8 million, and 8 million. So even if we go back and redo the formulas and by some miracle MCSO has not increased historically greater than 3%, we still have a significant shortfall.
I believe we do, yes.
Okay, first question. My second question is, as we look at the revenues, and I had an opportunity to look at your spreadsheets, thank you for those, as far as I can see, the projections in there include all the projects that are kind of ramping up moving forward. Could you just list what those, what those projects are, the revenue from those projects that was included in the analysis?
I'm looking for our Development Services Director.
Right here.
He provided the projections, and correct me if I might be wrong. We have...
Well, I mean, I can help you with it because it was in the presentation.
Projects.
Yeah, I mean, what's, the revenue for Park Place is in there, right?
Yes.
All phases. The revenue for Copperwind, all phases, is in there. The, the revenue for...
For Copperwind, we assumed that it was only going to be the 200 room...
Phase one.
I'll let him.
All I'm trying to clarify, and we don't have to get, you know, split hairs, is that you have projected all of the revenue that we can see in the near future with respect to the projects that are ramping up in queue and moving forward.
That's correct. We also included the state trust land, which...
You did include the state trust land, okay, which is not in queue.
Correct.
Okay, so if nothing happens there, then our revenue would, projections would even be lower. Okay, thank you.
So here is what staff was able to come up with for possible revenue options. These are essentially the same as were presented at the council retreat in February. Increase in sales tax.
Craig, I apologize for interrupting. So if you were to normalize, say, an average, and I think what Councilmember Legay was getting at, is if you looked at what our needs would be to be able to support the 10-year projection, it averages about $6 million a year.
Correct.
That, so not only the issue that we have with the $3.7 million shortfall in two years, that begins in two years, but basically we have an average of $6 million a year increases that we need to be able, not increases, but if you leveled it for 10 years, it's $6 million a year that we have to be able to support, and the revenue is just not there. So that, that, I'm only mentioning that because when we're looking at these, these options here, you have to kind of have an idea as to what we need to generate each year to be able to get to that $6 million number.
Councilman Tollis?
So, thank you, Mayor. So when you just indicated that you had calculated in Park Place, Copperwind, and the state trust land, I'm thinking, and correct me if I'm wrong, if you're dealing with Park Place, you're dealing with the construction costs, the revenues from the construction expenses that are coming to the town? Is that what you're calculating?
We're calculating the permit revenue.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, and Copperwind, same, same concept, that that's the revenue you're adjusting? Or are you talking about also bed tax?
For Copperwind, we have used the projection they provided to us, which includes the bed tax as well as any incremental sales.
Okay, and in, in the Park Place, are you including rental tax on the 400 units that are going to be there?
I believe we did, didn't we?
Pardon me?
We didn't include that?
I do not believe we did.
Okay, so and on the state trust land, we right now, based on the Elman project, it was 1,250 roughly homes, but we are now hoping that we're going to have cooperation from the state and that we're going to have a developer that we may have upwards of 1,800 homes. Are you looking at the construction permitting revenue from that? Is that what you're calculating in your projections?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so my question would be this. If we're looking at, in a 10-year forecast, 400 new residents downtown, on average, you know, call it a little less than 2 on average is what I think the statistics typically look at. So you're adding maybe 1,000 some odd people downtown. You've got maybe 1,800 homes, let's call it 1,500 in the state trust land, that now we're looking at maybe another 5,000 people that are going to be contributing to our sales tax revenues model right now? Are any of those projections included in this model of what is the impact, economic impact of all the people in the population we're going to bring into this community? Is that in the model too?
It is not.
Okay.
Yeah, and let me just kind of address a couple questions or points. If you go back to the driver slide, the, the additional population, while it will help with the sales tax, to your point, Councilmember Tollis, it's also a big driver. It's requiring us to build and staff a fire station. So the fire station, just to build is probably, you know, in that 10-year period, is going to be quite expensive. And I believe the annual cost of operating, it's about a million dollars. The, we don't receive, when you build and you have more people in town, it, it helps population-wise, but there's also then the net increase for services. And so we'll probably have to increase police, which we haven't even gotten into, the police beats. And there's also more wear and tear on our roads and, and the, you know, maintenance for parks and all that. So I'm not, I'm not trying to be a naysayer, but I'm just trying to say, really, growth, we try to have growth pay for itself during the construction aspects. And a lot of the revenues we get for the new homes, like the construction sales tax, is really one-time use. And that goes towards our capital program. So it's, it's not like we're going to be making lots of money off these people. And then the other thing is on the state shared revenue, our state shared revenue, while we'll probably go up a little bit, say by the 5,000 people that we have here, it's not, we're not growing at the same rate or pace of the other cities. And so our slice, the pie, still is getting smaller out of the overall state shared revenue fund. So I'm, I'm just bringing that up because I, if we were growing at a faster clip and we were a bigger city, it would be a significant revenue advantage. So I'm sorry, I just wanted to just bring those points up.
Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. That's a great explanation. I think we also need to add to that explanation, the simple fact that if this, if the state isn't careful and they change the transaction privilege tax regulations for the general contractors, the only place we'll be receiving sales tax will be from Ace Hardware and the Tractor Store because we don't have a lumber or a roofing distributor or, or anybody else that's going to pay any of the taxes. So we need to watch that very carefully because I don't know what the percentage of revenue from, from construction is, but it's significant enough that it affects us annually when we aren't building.
Councilman Tollis?
Thank you. And there's no question that we have some challenging times, but my point is, is that if we're going to model this and we're going to present this, that I think we have to put all of the calculations in, and all of the projections that also include the additional revenue. And in my own analysis of where our town is right now, and this is again, you know, I'm, all due respect, you have tremendous experience and I appreciate everything you're doing, and we need to listen to you. But at the same token, I think to myself, you know, we on, on average have 20,000 people, let's say, year-round here. So the fluctuation, you have the snowbirds, you have, okay, so let's, let's call it 20, right? If we're going to go to 25, if we're going to look at a chart, and I, and I want to, I wish you had this chart because I looked at it and I didn't see the same, and I want you to correct me if I'm wrong, I didn't see the same facts as what you're saying here. Now, you said the town's local sales tax is elastic and subject to fluctuations.
Correct.
Okay, now I, I looked at that sales tax over the last eight years. It appeared to me, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, that we were on average right about $8 million in sales tax revenues. So logically, I just think to myself, you know, if we're looking at adding 5,000 more permanent residents to this community, is it out of line to think that we would add roughly 4 million in sales tax revenues from that addition? And, and again, this is discussion, this is what tonight's for. Help me understand your perspective of that and whether that's all in this model. And, and let me clarify, I'm having this discussion and I understand, we, we have some challenges, but I just want to make sure that we don't jump the gun and make a recommendation that is premature in, in moving forward with some sort of a recommendation that's going to ask the residents for more taxation, let's say, okay?
Mayor, if I may?
Did you want to answer that or...
I, I can offer a brief answer. I think 4 million additional in sales tax is very high. I, 8 million on average, I believe, is probably a good number for what we have now. To add 4 million with just 5,000 more residents, I don't think is realistic, but I've not done the math. You may be more accurate than I am.
Mayor, but...
Vice Mayor? All right, you go first.
I, I like your optimism.
You know what?
Let's do the math, though. Let's say optimistically, we're adding $4 million in sales tax revenue, which I think is a stretch. What's 2.6% of that? Certainly not 4 million. And we've talked about this several times before, we need to increase our economy by $40 million in sales, $40 million in sales to generate 1 million 40,000 dollars. 40 million dollars to generate a million. We're looking at projections here that are averaging about 6 million shortfall a year. Well, let's whomp off a million for some of the reasons you mentioned. Let's say we're down to 5 million. 40 million dollars in sales revenue isn't going to happen, but optimistically, if it does happen, now we're down to a $4 million deficit. And there's many of us that sat here during the downturn of the economy, and our revenues were, were anemic. And we're still paying for that. We're still paying for managing our way through that crisis in terms of facilities, roads, so forth and so on. So I can be optimistic, but at the end of the day, it's the math. 4 million times 2.6% doesn't generate a whole lot of revenue.
Where are you, where are you, I'm coming up with, you know, 4 million in net, I'm not, I'm not taking 2.6. 4 million would come from the accumulation of the sales tax revenues from the increase in the population that we have. So if we have $8 million right now in sales tax revenues, and you add the density and you add the downtown district and you add all of this commerce, I'm thinking that...
So you, yeah, and...
I'm not coming up with 2.6 of 4 million.
Okay, so Mayor, if I may, I'm just trying to work through this. Okay, I'll be optimistic. So you're saying in raw revenue to us is 4 million dollars?
I'm saying we go from 8 to 12 with the addition of the downtown project, the Copperwind, the increase in our tourism. We have, if you're, if you're calculating in, in your projections that the state trust land's going to develop, we're going to have another 4,000 to 5,000 residents in this community. And I just think that we need to look at all of these factors and make sure that when we present these shortfalls, that we're looking at a number of different models. And, you know, we brought up the one comment about MCSO with 10% increase every year. That's 16 million dollars in 10 years. If you take 16 million dollars off of this graph of the revenue shortfalls, we have a balanced budget. So we've, we've got to look at this and just make sure that we really dig deep and we evaluate everything. That's all I'm suggesting.
Mayor, if I may?
Councilman Brown?
Thank, thank you, Mayor. So if we round numbers, have 25,000 people today and we were coming up with 8 million dollars, that's more like a 1.6 million dollar increase.
My example, I said 20,000, 20,000 people on average, not 25, but 20.
Okay.
Yeah.
So before, 2, 2 million dollars a year, correct?
Vice Mayor?
We seem to be making a lot of assumptions. For example, who's to say that all of these people are going to be coming from outside of Fountain Hills? What percentage of them will be people who already live here? We don't know what the population's going to be. With regard to the trust lands, tell me when the state's going to make a decision. Tell me what developer, when a developer is going to start work and do the engineering. Tell me when a developer is going to put the first homes online. Tell me when they're first going to be occupied. What do we do in the meantime? I mean, we could be talking many years. If you look at this information and if you assumed, all right, I agree, it's a discussion. I mean, you're assuming the best and you're trying to be realistic, but so am I. What do we do in the next number of years if, if those optimistic projections are wrong? What do we do next year or the year after? That money isn't going to just start flowing in from these developments. I do not believe we can grow our way out of this, no matter what.
Mayor, if I may?
Anything else? Let me make sure that Councilman Yates is not forgotten.
He got cut off.
Oh, did he?
He's just not... Pardon me.
Oh, okay. I didn't want to forget him up there. Okay.
This is a discussion. This is not to be argumentative. This is what tonight's for, is to bring up these types of discussion points. We, we talked a lot about this at our retreat back in January, and we talked about a number of ideas in regards to development. And I know we talked about the state, the Shea development, or the Shea property that the town owns, and how can we maximize the revenues, and what can we do to develop that property? We had a lot of thoughts at our retreat. So again, this is for discussion. Please don't take me in an, in an argumentative way. I just have asked a lot of questions and you've answered them and you indicated, you know, you did not include that in the projections. So it seems like maybe some of the things I'm saying are valid, that we need to put it all in the bucket and then really look at a model and come up with a solution, which clearly we need solutions, okay? So I'm not debating that.
Mayor?
Ask Councilman DePorter.
I was just, I was just going to ask if, if we could go through the suggestions that the staff had and then have, have at it at this conversation after that.
Okay, we could do that. Is that okay? Let's go on.
Let me address some of Councilman Tollis's points. GPEC did a study for us. Just so while we're on that thing. GPEC did a study for us on the impact of Copperwind. And their cumulative 10-year projection of total economic impact, direct and indirect, was 3.5 million. Then our Economic Development Director prepared an analysis of total TPT projections. For 2017, he projected that there were 11,349 households, and they would generate 9.69 million in total TPT collections. And that's roughly in line with our 8 million because it has been increasing. In 2027, their projection is 13,000 households, but only 11.1 million in total TPT collections. So TPT collections would go up by about a million and a half dollars over that 10-year Moving right along. Sales tax, as Councilman Legay mentioned, it's going to require a lot of sales to generate a significant impact in collections for the town. Every 0.1... Every 0.1% would generate $340,000. We are now at 8.9%. Previously, I believe, at the council retreat, I had passed out a handout that listed all the communities within the county and what their sales tax collection rate is. I don't have that with me tonight, but I can then easily provide that again, if you would like to have that. Another option, public safety fee. I'm using the same households that ED used for their projection in 17, 11,349. A $100 fee would generate 1.2 million in revenue.
Mayor?
Vice Mayor?
Before you go on, I think it's important to point out, if I'm correct, that under the public safety fee, wouldn't everybody pay the same amount?
That is correct.
Regardless, I mean, Target would pay the same as I would pay, and every...
At a flat $100, yes.
Well, why would it make any difference how much it is? They'd still, everybody's pay the same, wouldn't they?
Yes, if, if that's how council implemented the fee.
Is there another way to implement it?
By looking at our town council, no, there is not.
That's what I thought. So, no matter how much it is, 100, 200, whatever, everybody pays the same.
Yes.
That's what I wanted to say.
And could you specify which of these are council-approved and which of them are voter-approved? Just so everyone who's...
Sales tax is strictly council's option. Public safety fee is strictly council's option. Special district, we have one community facilities district in town, Eagle Mountain. Existing law does not allow for a special district to cover both police and fire, and this would require a vote of the residents.
As I understand it, because it was dissolved, it would be very difficult, the legislature... Andrew, maybe you can answer that question? Legislature would have to approve the formation of a district? It's very complicated steps, I think we looked into that.
Mayor, members of the council, there are, there's actually two separate issues here. One is a, I guess, a reformation of, of what is essentially a county fire district model that was here before. That has a separate governing body, separately elected, has a formation process that's currently in the statute. What doesn't exist in the statute right now is a process for a city or town to create a fire district over its boundaries. But there's a similar type of formation that was created in, for, three or four years ago now, to allow for formation in a county island area outside of Gilbert was the, the driving force. That's a pretty good model for how it could be implemented at a city or town level, but that would require legislative change.
Okay, thank you.
Other options, a franchise fee. That would generate about 200,000 annually, and that would be council-approved, I believe. Want me to be corrected now?
Yeah, franchise fees are another interesting issue. You have a number of, well, not a number of, I think you have two users of your rights-of-way who are supposed to have franchises and do not. The publicly regulated entities, like the water company, have the authority to charge a franchise fee as part of their rate and, and fee schedule. So, that if the town were to authorize a franchise fee, it would be able to be passed through under their current approvals. But a franchise in Arizona has to be granted via a vote of the town, and they're granted for periods of 25 years. It's based upon whatever percentage you voted at the, the election, but it's a town election for a franchise fee.
Okay, any questions on any of that before we go on? Okay.
We currently have a outside auditor, Al Haller and Associates, that pursues residential rental taxes for us.
How's that going?
We're not reaping the benefits that we anticipated.
Are we able to find, though, as many as we think are out there? Or is it just that he can't find them?
We can find a lot more than he and his staff have time to look at. It probably takes a good four to five hours, given an address, to be able to just get the necessary background to know whether that's a possibility. And from there, we have to then contact the resident, find out if they're actually paying tax, look them up in DOR's register. If we do conduct an audit, it's typically a month to two months to conduct. Then, by the recent change with DOR, all audit results are provided to DOR. They then assume responsibility for collection. And their tax collection staff has been dramatically reduced. I think they have six, maybe? And they are looking at the total tax due to the state. And if we're looking at a $5,000 amount that they owe the town, it might be 20,000 that is owed to the state, but they're over, they're looking at the million-dollar accounts and pursuing those. So, we have a variety of challenges to, to try to ramp up the residential rental.
And I understand it's particularly difficult if a home is owned by a Canadian resident? By someone who's a, who has two homes, one here, one rental, and they actually are Canadian residents because they have no social security number, is that right?
Correct. They have a Canadian ID that is not registered anyplace, so we can't track them through DOR.
And how, how do you anticipate it's gonna work? We have quite a few homes that are being rented through Airbnb, and now that Airbnb is supposed to be collecting the tax, do you anticipate that that's gonna bring in more revenue, that they're gonna be more efficient in that? Or what do you think? I'm just asking for your best guess, that's it.
I, I don't know that efficiency has anything to do with it. Under the contract they signed with DOR, they are responsible for collecting this rental tax for any listing that they sponsor. And they are paying a lump sum total to DOR and not identifying the individual taxpayers.
So, we wouldn't be able to determine if they owed us back taxes?
We could not. Nor could we determine who they are paying for.
Okay, thank you.
We could raise town fees. And so, listed here are some of the examples of the amounts that we've collected in the most recent completed fiscal year. In all of 1516, we collected $466,000. It would be a, more than a significant increase to raise those fees to get us the revenue that we anticipate we're going to need. But those are subject to council approval. Primary property tax would require a vote of the residents. I've listed the various home values, as well as what the tax would be based on various values of homes. 3, 6, 9, and 12, no, I'm sorry. That's the amount of revenue that would be raised. If we wanted 3 million for a $250,000 home, that would be $177,000, $177 annually that they would be paying. If we wanted to raise 12 million for that same home, it'd be $708 the resident would pay. And I believe I said that it does require a vote of the residents. Then flipping the coin and looking at the other side, how can we reduce expenditures? We could reduce service level, levels, close the community center, reduce the fountain operating time. We could reduce coverage for police and fire. The last time we looked at reducing police, we asked to go from 3.8 to 3.4 beats, and that was a savings of 215,000. So, adjusted for current dollars, it'd about, be about 300,000 annually. Reduce staff. We could try mandatory staff furloughs. Each day would get us about 12,000 to 14,000. Or we could try identifying more services that we could contract out. That would be a effort in developing comprehensive request for proposals and drafting them and then evaluating them. And savings wouldn't be determined until those responses are received.
Councilman Brown has a question.
Not a question as much as a statement, you know? We're looking at a $6 million shortfall, and everything you presented to us is, in my opinion, a Band-Aid. And of course, we're looking at, in my profession, it's called a WIG. And even though it's an educated WIG, it's a great guess. And looking 10 years into the future, as you started your presentation, looking 10 years in the future is totally impossible to do, especially with the way that Fountain Hills is growing, and then not growing, and what we're going through internationally, et cetera, et cetera. So, I think, I think we need to quit talking about a $215,000 savings annually, or, you know, unless, unless we wanna just do it all. And, you know, if we do it all, then we'll have enough savings to count, or... And if we implement a sales tax and a public service fee and, and the special districts option and a sales, a property tax, then we might be able to talk about having enough money to go back and fix what we haven't fixed for the last 30 years, and then have enough money to let our town grow properly in the near future. So, I think, I think we are up here with great intentions, and I think you have done an incredible job, staff included. But I think that we are not addressing the problem, and the problem needs to be addressed. We're not talking $215,000, we're talking $6 million, and we need to address that problem. So, I, I've got, I, you know, I'm not sitting here prepared to make a recommendation. Councilmember Yates, before, and he apologized for not being able to be here tonight. He, he called and asked me to bring up the idea of a facilities maintenance district. And I would ask, if I could, I'd like Andrew to address this a little bit. I, I didn't fully understand it, but it sounded to be more feasible in the, in the light of being able to tell the residents of Fountain Hills your money's going to be spent for ABC, opposed to a property taxed where it's, can be spent for other items.
Mayor, Councilmember Brown, I'm gonna have to guess a bit at what Councilmember Yates is referring to. I know that he and I have discussed a number of different things that are currently existing in state statute that are untested in the way that we're talking about them. The only districts that we've formed so far in the town are fairly small. I mean, the community facilities district in Eagle Mountain is, is over a fairly decent-sized area, but as compared to the whole town, it's significantly smaller than the whole. The community facility district idea is to expand that concept over the entire town area. One of the challenges is that you already have one in Eagle Mountain, so you have a potential for overlapping districts. And I don't know that we have those in the state, but we potentially do. Improvement districts, like the Cottonwoods District, there are some versions that appear to have a broader range to allow for those areas. You know, some of the, the things that we've talked about are akin to like what was in existence in Fountain Hills before the town incorporated with the road districts. So, there are a number of tools that may be available, but haven't been used that way before. I think is the best way I can describe them. And, you know, with some legislative tweaks, some of them could be usable as well to try and create things like road districts or other districts, so that you have a specific purpose for them, rather than having just a general taxation. But in the end, we haven't pursued anything beyond just that discussion, because I don't have any direction from all of you to, to go down that road. Might be quite extensive.
Did you, did you have anything else? Vice Mayor?
I'm just gonna ask for a bit of clarification. Councilman Brown, did you say that your understanding from Councilman Yates is that we'd specify where the money's gonna be spent?
That's, you know, we've, we've tried, we've, the town of Fountain Hills has tried twice to pass a property tax, and both times, it was beat up badly, 80/20. And when we finally presented the Saguaro Road Bond correctly, it passed 8818, or something, 8812. And it was, it was presented properly, and, and I think his intent was saying that, opposed to... We, we've got a lot of things to look at. I don't know, I don't know that we have everything on the table. I don't know that our toolbox is full to come up with a good solution after looking at the possibility of doing a district, after the possibility of, of bringing back a road district. You know, I think, I think we need to meet and, and really look at, because I don't think we've got all of our options listed on these, on the, on the six pages that we're looking at. So, you know, I'm, frankly, I am totally ready to put a, a property tax on the line and try to sell it, because if we don't do something in the town of Fountain Hills, and if we don't do something fairly quickly, we're going to be in deeper prob, deeper trouble, our real estate values are gonna start to go down, our staff will be walking off the job because they are unhappy and beat up by the citizens of the town, as well as the council. But the council's elected to take care of this town, and I think that's what we need to be talking about.
Follow up, I'm...
Vice Mayor?
I'm sorry, I'm just a little confused by what you said. He's saying that you would delay doing anything until we look at some other options?
Absolutely. I don't think we've got all the options, you know, the, we've, we've got a list of Band-Aids, and then we've got a property tax. Because everything else on here is a Band-Aid. You can't go to the filling station with a dollar and a half and fill your car up anymore. And that's, in essence, what we're asking to do with the Band-Aids.
I, I would just, I would just say that, that's, that's fine. I would just, I'm starting to feel some real urgency. Talked about all the possibilities for raising revenue, a lot of them, for quite a while. Time is passing, our situation is getting worse. So, I would just urge council and staff to set a timetable, to get the information we need, get it before us, and make a decision.
Councilman Brown?
So, Grady, what is the timeline on getting something put on a ballot?
So, my understanding is that this would be a May ballot item. So, it'd be May of next year, 'cause we can't get on it, obviously, next month. So, and there are some time periods that we have to meet in order for this to be on the ballot. We have to work very closely, and my understanding is with the county elections, and we have to produce, you know, like a publicity pamphlet, and we have to get the language. Andrew's very active, or would be very active, in, in assisting us with that.
So, do we know what those timelines are?
We can, we can come back at a later time with that, but definitely May.
Are we talking about the primary property tax time?
That's what I think I'm hearing.
Anything, wouldn't anything that is put on a ballot have the same timeline?
What's different?
Not, not exactly.
Not exactly.
Now, the, the primary property tax election is the one that has the strictest timeline, because it can only be held on the May consolidated election date. So, that one sets your timeframe at about the first or second meeting in January of that year. You have to make the decision. So, if you were going to be targeting May of 2018, your target time for having made a decision is January of 2018. The other types of districts or other things, those are on any of the four consolidated dates. So, you're a little bit more flexible on those in general. But if it's primary property tax, it's gotta be May.
Thank you, Mayor. So, does that answer your question as far as the timeframe? So, what would you say if I said, "Let's have something decided before we go to Christmas break on the December 25th of 17"? Then we'll have a thought, well-thought-out, good, well-proposed plan.
And in the meantime, Andrew could research the community facilities district, which Councilman Yates has been talking about as another possibility, or any other possibility that you know of that would be feasible for us to look at. And also to take into consideration the comments of Councilman Tolles in getting the best true picture, including some of the items that he mentioned today. Because I, I, I don't think that we're saying it's gonna make that much of a difference, or it's gonna... or it's gonna make some difference, but we don't know. So...
I think that's very fair.
I think we're all just saying, we want a total picture, so that when we go into this, our eyes are open, we know exactly, or pretty much, the best possible guess. And then with all of the information we have here, plus additional information about other possibilities, we would be able to make that decision in time.
Could I answer the council? I'm sorry, Mayor.
No, well, you can sort of answer through me, but go ahead.
Okay. Well, I wonder, I, I didn't answer the question about timing, because I wasn't certain. I'm a little concerned. I mean, we obviously can't campaign for it, but citizens can do whatever they want. And I just wanna make sure they have sufficient time. And I guess I would back it up another month or so, if possible, to like November. And during the holidays, not a lot's gonna happen anyway. Just to make sure that the, the citizens have enough time to learn what they need to learn for people, if they want to go out in favor of it and, and hold any kind of meetings, whatever, make sure there's plenty of time for that. But I'm not gonna quibble, I'm not gonna quibble over a month, but, you know...
We can direct staff to do this as quickly as possible, but on the other hand, if the residents know that we have thoroughly investigated all possibilities, and we are able to present all of it, they would probably be more favorable to our decision.
I'll agree with that.
Okay. Anything else? Councilman LaJaye?
Yes, I would like to address the town attorney. A community facilities district, is that what we're talking about?
Mayor, Councilmember LaJaye, one of the discussions that have, that I've had with Councilmember Yates was regarding utilizing a community facilities district in a broader way than it has been before.
And would that require a change in the law or legislation to, to apply the model in, in, in the way that is being recommended? It's my understanding that model doesn't exist to apply in that particular fashion. So would it have to go to the state legislature, I guess, is my question?
We're uncertain whether or not that's the case. But it would require a vote of the town. The primary difference between utilizing a CFD that way and the way that it was used in Eagle Mountain, in Eagle Mountain, a CFD was primarily a tool for the developer to use publicly financed bonds as infrastructure payment. And so there's a single property owner at the time, so you can waive the election requirement. When you form a CFD over an area that's occupied by voters, you have a full-on election in order to form that as well. So you're, you're kind of in the same boat you are with the primary property tax. The difference is that you may have a limitation on the amount that you can levy in a given year for maintenance under that.
And Mayor, if I may, so in that regard, it's my understanding, similar to a, a, a bond, you would have to be very specific in terms of how you're gonna spend all this money. Is that correct?
CFDs have traditionally been...
Targeted.
...for specific infrastructure that was known at the time.
You, you would have to list what, every single item that the CFD is gonna cover in terms of pushing this forward to the, the voters. And my last question, if I may, if we're successful at doing that, how do we, how is this money collected?
Via property tax.
Thank you. We've, we've come full circle. Kicking the can down the road.
Well, I, I think, as Councilman Yates has mentioned, the major differences, and I think Councilman Brown mentioned also, is that residents like to know exactly where their money is going. That's not just going to a general fund, because they want to know how it's spent. The road bond was successful. Fixed Saguaro, don't do anything else. That's what they wanted. They voted overwhelmingly for it, so we give them the option to say what exactly, where exactly this money is going, and it can't be used for anything else. And hopefully, that would cause more of a positive reaction during an election. Councilman Tolles?
So, in January, we spent over a half a day here in the retreat. And in, in our analysis and our moving forward with these timelines of coming up with a strategic plan that we're gonna implement a solution to this, I would like to see, see the minutes from that meeting, because I know that a lot of what we're talking about right now, and a lot of the initiatives that we wanted to see happen, were discussed at that meeting. And we're here now in April, and I feel like, to a certain extent, this is Groundhog Day. And, and I really feel like what has been accomplished, where are we at? And I can tell you, Copperwind Development was passed. You see the downtown project, that's significantly advanced from where it was then. We, we did not talk about the great job that Scott Cooper's doing with economic development, and we have a, what, what has been in the papers as a medical facility. I don't know if it's public, what it is yet or not, but, you know, there's a lot of positive...
It is now.
I didn't say the name of the company. I didn't say any names in the company. So, you know, we have a lot of positive things happening. But we gotta look at those minutes, because truly, we're, we are kicking the can down the road here, the same conversation we had in January, and here we are in April. And we, and we need to put, double down on our efforts to work with the state and make sure that we're doing everything we can to, to create the environment for a strong development to happen at the trust land. I don't know what timeframe that is. This facilities district and reviewing and looking at how we implement and what that's gonna take, we talked about that extensively at that retreat. And here we are in April, and we still kinda don't know the answers. We need answers. We need to know what it's gonna take and whether or not it's feasible. Because if it's not feasible, then take it off the table, and let's not waste any time on it. And if we're continuing to go back to this primary property tax, then, you know, let's get all the analysis, put all the things in, and figure out really where we're at. We're gonna have a nice meeting with the sheriff, Penzone's coming. Let's, let's address the fact that where are our projections gonna be? And what does he anticipate, the sheriff's department? And how are they gonna cover these costs? I mean, let's have these real hard conversations and just get as many real answers as we can before we move on any other option.
Okay, and Grady, could you have those minutes available?
You bet.
Okay. Anything else? Dan, anything else, Craig?
Yes, I have to show my last slide.
Oh, okay.
Which essentially says what we just talked about.
Well, good.
I'm done.
Then we did it. All right. Any other council discussion? And I know we don't have any speaker cards. Okay, then, let me just get a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Okay. Thank you, everyone. Good meeting.